All meeting to order, begin with the flag salute.
My flag allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to our board meeting. Indicate that we're keeping a record and it's also available online for people to watch our deliberations. We will begin with awards and recognitions. Correspondents, Commissioner Schaefer?
I do have these, but I words Commissioner Dorn's liaison assignment. Did he want to handle those? Or Commissioner Dorn, I've got it in front of me if you don't have it. I know you're on the phone.
I don't.
Okay, alright. So, due to the fact that he's on the phone and doesn't have the documents in front of him like I have the honor of, first of all, we had a dispatcher graduate the academy recently. Dispatcher Dina, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name, Josue, Josue, do you know how to pronounce that, Dan?
Uh, Dewey.
Okay. Graduated and Dina undertook the role of being the class speaker and coordinated with her class to do their project for the class project for the Post family. And that's referring to Deputy Jason Post who, as you might all know, we recently lost in an off-duty accident in Wallau County. In addition, Dina scored a 92% on her final exam. All the while, she has been away from her family and adorable baby while at the academy doing exceptional, oh, there it is, work. And to top this all off, the hard work today, effort at the graduation, Dina was awarded the Victor Giatia Award. Now, the Victor Giatia Award is given to every class of the academy. One person in the class has given that award and it's named after the governor at the time who founded the academy, DPSST. That is very huge. It's a great honor. The last time anybody from our agency won the Victor Giatia Award would have been 1999 or early 2000 and that would have been now Lieutenant Ward with the sheriff's office. She also won that award. So, it's a very prestigious award and not easy to come by. So, congratulations and well done. And also, the second one, also coming out of the sheriff's office, now I'm going to read a letter from a Dr. Rob Waite out of Idaho. He says, Sheriff Rowan, I want to pass on my thanks and admiration to Deputy Eric Palmer. On Memorial Day weekend, my wife and I spent the day at Frasier Winham ATV park with our young nephew and his friend. We were far from our truck when one of our ATVs got a flat tire. We tried what we could, but it just could not stop leaking. Luckily for us, we came upon Deputy Palmer. We inquired if he could help and he of course said he could. His actions went beyond friendly professionalism. He was kind and helpful. He took care of everything we needed to get our tire back in business and we were able to make it back to the truck. What a pro he was. We can't thank him enough and kudos to you for employing such fine deputies. You must run a great department. I always backed the blue, but even more so now. You guys are awesome. Thanks, Rob and Jody Waite.
Well, nice.
Yeah, very nice letter.
Okay, we have two minutes, two minutes of previous meetings, May 26, 2021 and June 2, 2021.
Um, in favor, shall we approve the minutes?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, any additions, any additions to the agenda?
Not anymore.
Okay, public input from visitors?
Actually, nice to see an audience out there today.
Yeah, alright, we've reordered our agenda and we're going to begin with the behavioral health contract. Commissioner Dorn has limited availability this morning and so we'll start with that because I believe that's the item in which he's most interested. So, who's going to present this?
I guess I can start. As you may recall, the county issued a request for proposals for community addictions and mental health program services. There were two proposals that were received and on May 26, the Board of Commissioners gave us intent to award the contract to community counseling solutions for both components of the contract, of the services. Following that, the county received a protest on that by Lifeways who also had submitted a proposal. The time period for making a protest to the award have passed and so the board can now act on the official award of the contract and also act on the protest that was raised by Lifeways. If the board wants to, I'm going to send the details on the protests or...
Oh, we'll defer to the chair.
No, I don't.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, the board has had the opportunity to review the protests and also both the proposals, so matters before the board to take further action. Several options, you could go ahead and proceed with awarding the contract if you so desire and override the protest. You could revisit the request for proposals, you can cancel it, and then there are other options if you want to pursue those, but the main ones are those few.
Well, I'm sure that there's going to be some discussion after my motion, but I'm going to, Mr. Chair, if you, if you'd be so kind, I would make the motion that we override the protest and officially award the contract to community counseling services out of, our solutions, sorry, out of Hepner.
Aye.
Okay, before we proceed, I'd like to make a statement with a record. I'd like to thank the committee that devoted their time to studying the proposal for a new mental health and substance abuse provider for Yumitella County. Although I was not directly involved in the decision, I do know that considering the possibility of a new provider has been a long time coming based upon input we have received from law enforcement, medical facilities, educators, and others who have deep concerns about the service being provided to Yumitella County residents. The only objections I have heard have come from Lifeways employees and their corporate office. On the other hand, we have received numerous messages of enthusiasm from throughout the county. To those who made the recommendation to the commissioners, I'm sorry, the newspaper account was primarily guided by a less than professional press release from the Lifeways head office. While CCS has not yet been formally awarded the contract, we have already received more communication from them than we've received from Lifeways in the last year or more. For my part, I am confident our residents will receive skilled and expedient service as well the agencies that depend on the provider for support.
I too would like to thank the committee for their work and, and all their efforts in helping us choose a provider. As you know, this came, stemmed from an independent consultant that we had and their primary recommendation was to put the two entities, both mental health and behavioral health, also known as alcohol and drugs, under the same umbrella. And I think that's going to give the best care to the citizens of Yumitella County. I think, I think that these steps that we've taken are going to, are going to make a better end product for mental health and behavioral health in Yumitella County. I'm very excited for this. One thing I should note is I printed off the article from East Oregonian and one, one line stood out to me. It says, "Should the county maintain its decision to go with CCS? Both providers have said they will work with, with each other in any way possible to promote a smooth transition for patients and provide care in the county." So, I'm excited to see that both entities are willing to do what's best for the citizens of Yumitella County and I look forward to working with CCS. Thank you.
Commissioner Dorn, any comment?
Uh, none at all. I defer to both, both of Chair Murdock and Commissioner Schaefer with their time involved in this election, so I have nothing to add with already been said.
Counsel, anything else?
No, nothing further.
Alright, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll now step aside from our regular, our regular board meeting and go into hearing mode. This is a land use hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitella County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is George Murdock. I'm the chairman of Yumitella County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public...
Mr. Murdock?
What?
Uh, I'm sorry, I was just going to ask to be excused so that I don't interrupt, interrupt as I just did.
Okay. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning property owners Richard and Sandra Hunsaker proposed changes to the Yumitella County zoning map, map 4N2804, tax lots 1,000 and 1,200, formerly growth boundary UGB of the city of Hermiston and zone F2, general rural zone, 19 acre minimum. The F2 zone is from Yumitella County's 1972 zoning code and is primarily located within the UGBs. The property owners are requesting a rezone to FU10, future urban, 10 acre minimum. Both F2 and FU zone properties inside of Hermiston's UGB are managed by Yumitella County. The criteria for approval for amendments are found in Yumitella County Development Code I'll begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any persons in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or question, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and your address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. Okay, staff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Heidi May Green, I'm Heidi Mayner. The request for you today, C-316-21, is a zoning map amendment request. The applicant, Richard and Sandra Hunsaker, are requesting to rezone and partition two parcels that are located in the Hermiston serving growth boundary. The Hunsaker properties are located in north of West Farm Extension and east of Yumitella River, approximately one half mile west of Hermiston City limits. The standards applied to this request are from the statewide planning goals, joint management agreement with the city of Hermiston, the city of Hermiston comprehensive plan and the county development code. The criteria for approval of this zoning map amendment are found in Yumitella County Development Code Sections 152.750 to 152.755. The Planning Commission's recommendation to the Board of Commissioners is based on substantial factual evidence in the record. The first hearing on the Hunsaker amendment request was before the county planning commission on May 27, 2021. The planning commission voted unanimously on a recommendation of approval to rezone the Hunsaker properties from F2, general rural zoning, to FU10, future urban, 10 acre minimum zoning, with the addition of some language to the goal 10 findings and move the Hunsaker rezone application forward to the Board of Commissioners for a decision. In addition, the planning commission approved the Hunsaker land division request to create three parcels greater than 10 acres. The land division approval is conditioned on the board's approval of this rezone and does not require board action. Attached to the findings and conclusions in support of the Hunsaker rezone request, these are the findings and conclusions the planning commissioners adopted in their approval recommendation to the board. The Board of Commissioners may agree with the planning commission's approval recommendation and approve the Hunsaker rezone, or deny the rezone, or postpone a decision and continue the hearing. The final local decision made by the Board of Commissioners likewise must be based on substantial factual evidence in the record. There are several attachments included in the packets for review by the Board of Commissioners, including written testimony from the applicant and property owner, Richard Hunsaker, who I believe is on the call today. Late yesterday afternoon, planning received two letters in support of the zone change but in opposition to several of the conditions of approval opposed by the planning commission on the land division request. The letters were provided to you this morning, but because the conditions, the concerns are regarding the land division approval and not the zone change, they do not have much bearing on the decision before you today. This concludes the staff report. Thank you.
These are, I have two documents here that, that you referenced.
Yes.
I believe we have, have a motion to accept them, do we not?
So moved.
I'll second that. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. These are the documents, so I'll, to counsel. Alright, questions?
I noticed that in, in this, it was unanimous by the planning commission on a recommendation for approval?
Yes.
Okay. That's my last question.
Do note that I should call for abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declaration of ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Commissioner Dorn has already signified his position on this, so...
I do not have any objections.
Anyone else? Alright, any questions, more further questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant on the phone?
Is that, I do hear somebody on the phone. Is that the applicant on the phone we're hearing?
Oh, yes, right here. His microphone is not...
Was it star six maybe?
No, this is him right here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Mr. Hunsaker, I see, I see you on the screen. Are you unmuted there? Can you look at the bottom of your screen, unmute the microphone? The left part of your bottom screen, there should be a microphone highlighted in red. If you click that, it'll turn off the red.
I can't.
Can you do it, maybe?
No, I can't do it. Help, I understand.
Can Mr. Hunsaker, I can see you. Can you hear us? Can you wave if you can hear us? Okay, so you do hear us. So, did you have anything you wanted to say to us? You're good. Okay.
Okay. Any other proponents? Alright, opponents? Any opponents? I don't see anybody up there, do you?
I don't see any others.
Okay.
No, it's all seven of them.
Any comment from public agencies? No rebuttal since there's no comments. Is there any, is there any requests for continuance or for the record to remain open? None? Alright, counsel, can I close the hearing? Close the hearing. Commissioner, deliberation and discussion?
I don't have any discussion. I'm ready to make a motion.
I'll accept one.
I would, I would move approval of amendment Z316-21, oh, as ordinance number 2021-04.
Second? Any other comment? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Your next item is a natural hazards mitigation plan, update, draft plan and presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Bob Walther, County Planning Director. Also with me today is County Emergency Manager, Tom Roberts. And we're here today seeking your approval of order number BCC2021-060, which is adoption of the Yumitella County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, or NHMP. Over the past year, Yumitella County has collaborated with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development to update the county NHMP. The updated NHMP is a multi-jurisdictional document that includes all 12 incorporated cities in Yumitella County as well as four special districts. I've put together a brief PowerPoint presentation today. If you could pull that up, that would be great. But it provides an overview of the plan. Yumitella County last updated its NHMP in 2014. However, that plan only covered unincorporated county and a small handful of cities. FEMA requires that NHMPs be updated every five years. We tried funding the update through several grant applications in 2019, though were unsuccessful on those attempts. However, after the 2020 flood event, there was a renewed focus on updating the NHMP and because of the disaster declarations, federal funding became available to assist with this effort. And so, in March of 2020, Tom and I worked with Department of Land Conservation and Development to prepare a grant application for a hazard mitigation grant program. And we found out in July that we were selected and got notice to proceed on the project in last October. That grant required a local match, I believe it was 25% local match, but we were able to accomplish that with incoming contributions, so there was no financial burden on the county. We really wanted this plan to be useful for the entire county since all of our cities and communities have threats from natural disasters. So, we opened it up to them for participation as well as the special districts. And we had to enter into intergovernmental agreements with each of the 12 cities and the four districts. The four districts that participated were Soil and Water Conservation District, Stanfield Irrigation District, Hermiston Irrigation District, and the Walla Walla River Irrigation District. Our steering committee has been meeting monthly since October and the steering committee has helped guide the development of the plan along with Department of Land Conservation and Development. With COVID, you can imagine public involvement became much more difficult and so we worked really hard to ensure that each of the participating jurisdictions conducted some sort of public outreach, whether it was in the form of posters, presentations at city council meetings, or updating their websites. There are many reasons to engage in natural hazard mitigation planning. I've included three of the main ones up here today. The first is to avoid disasters by reducing or eliminating long-term risks to people, property, and the environment from natural hazards. So, this plan includes numerous implementation measures that the county and the cities can work on to help reduce or eliminate, reduce or eliminate that risk. The next is to increase safety and resiliency by integrating hazard mitigation into local plans, programs, and policies. For example, a city can use this plan to help create policies around local issues related to natural hazards. We're seeing this in Pendleton, for example, with the Makai Creek Solutions Group. They're seeking federal funding to do some studies on Makai Creek and because of this plan, they'll be able to apply for those funds. And then finally, to maintain eligibility for disaster-related funding. So, there's many federal funding strings out there that can be used to go towards natural disasters or natural hazards and prevention, but in order for the feds to fund these, you have to have a natural and updated NHMP. And so, with, with this update will be good for the next five years and can apply for federal funding for, for various projects. Alright, so these are the hazards that are included in our NHMP. Most of them should look pretty familiar to you. However, we added a new one. The steering committee felt that because of the wildfire smoke that we've experienced the last several years, as well as, you know, wintertime inversions, the air quality would be a good natural hazard to add to our plan. And then, the next slide here presents an overview of the plan. I didn't print out the document for you, it's over 900 pages, and so I didn't want to spend, go to the expense and time of doing that. There is a link available on the agenda and then when we receive final approval, we will print out a few versions of it to have on hand.
Commissioner Schaefer is your liaison, so we'll let him read it and then share the high points.
Perfect, some good bedtime reading.
Well, I did download it. It took a while to download, I'm not going to lie.
So, it's broken out into three volumes. Volume one is the basic plan. These are, includes all the things that FEMA would require us to have in our NHMP. And this includes an assessment about the county's risk to natural hazards, a mitigation strategy, and a discussion on plan implementation and maintenance. So, one of the interesting exercises we went through was a risk rating, and I've included, it's a little hard to see up there, but a figure from the plan that shows the risk scores for Yumitella County related to natural hazards. So, the highest is shown in red and it goes down from there to the lowest is in yellow. But it's really no surprise, the group went through this exercise and floods came out on top as the highest risk, but there's several not far behind, including, you know, wildfires and storms and air quality.
Is air quality...
Air quality was second, you know.
There was, I just read there was a time last summer when we were the highest in the nation, maybe, or state?
Right, and one of the considerations...
Lowest, we had the worst air quality.
Yeah, I think one of the considerations and how these scores are developed is based on public health and so that was probably one of the reasons it was bumped into a higher risk.
Did you hear, so public health, as the liaison to public health, I think you too should read this plan.
I'll read that section.
Commissioner, may I also point out, Commissioner Dorn is in on that too as my liaison, so...
I like that.
So, this was just an interesting exercise. I think we spent a couple meetings talking about this, but it provoked some good conversation. The basic plan in volume one also includes mitigation strategies. These are our projects that will work in.
For those of you on the phone, if you're not talking, could you please mute your mics, please, or, we appreciate that. We're getting some background noise in here. Thank you.
So, through the process, we identified over 80 mitigation strategies or projects and of those 80, 24 were related to flooding, so I thought that was kind of interesting. Volume two of the plan includes a hazard annex and so basically a narrative on each of the different, related to each of the different hazards we found here in Yumitella County. And then volume three is mitigation resources. So, that looks at things like a community profile for each of the participating jurisdictions involved in the plan. It looks at their political, social, economic capital that's available to help implement the plan. And then, volume three also includes a very detailed mapping section, several success stories, and some keys to implementation and maintenance. So, I'll finish today with next steps. In your packets is the pre-approval letter from FEMA. As we speak, each participating jurisdiction is working on adopting the plan. We hope to have that, everyone's plan adopted by August 1st. Once that is done, FEMA will grant us final approval and our plan will be good for the next five years. We will be working to schedule regular, regular meetings to discuss progress on implementing the plan as well as important plan maintenance. So, it's key that, and it's actually a requirement of FEMA, that we have regular meetings among, amongst the steering committee members to make sure that this plan is reviewed and updated. And this will actually simplify some of the work that will be necessary when a future plan update is required.
And how good is this plan, how long is this plan good for?
It'll be five years from the final, final approval letter that we get from FEMA, so probably five years, hopefully August 1st.
Perfect.
Somewhere around there.
Thank you.
With that, Tom and I would like to take a moment to thank a few folks. First, the commissioners for their participation in the planning process. I know Commissioner Schaefer participated early on and helped with some of the early project meetings. And then also Commissioner Dorn took over for those when he, when he took office. Also, Tricia Sears was our DLCD natural hazard planner and she helped draft much of the plan and facilitated the meetings and we were on a very aggressive schedule for these types of projects. They'd never done a plan this large with this many participating jurisdictions in this amount of time, so real tribute to her and great work she did. And then, the cities and special districts were all very heavily involved throughout the plan. I hate to say, but I think it helped having a natural disaster occur recently because there's a renewed interest among all of those cities to hopefully become more resilient. And then, also my staff in the planning department, because of them, we were able to contribute the local match requirements without any additional costs to the county. And it also resulted in some very nice mapping, but a lot of the plans didn't have that quality, that we had seen didn't have that quality of mapping. So, we're very happy with the product and we hope it'll be a useful tool for, for everyone.
Excellent. Thank you for all your work that you put in onto that and Tom, and I know Meg has put a little out of work into that too, so thank you very, very much for all the work. a little out of work into that too, so thank you very much for all the work that was put into this. That's not an easy task by any means.
So with that, we'll just need-
Where's that picture?
Approval of the-
Where was that picture?
What picture?
The flood picture. That was on where the South Fork and the North Fork and the Walla Walla River come together last February.
Where did you get that picture? I think I may have taken that.
You probably did.
Yeah, I said, I think I took that.
Okay, this is order number BCC 2021-060. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair of Approval. Is that what you're looking for, approval of the plan?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just listening. I believe Commissioner Doran is no longer with us.
He left, he had to leave.
So I will second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Counsel, should I mark these absent?
I'll, I can stop now.
All right, the next item is, I also would compliment you on the amount of work you had to do on this, Bob. Item three, liability and workers' compensation insurance.
The matter for renewal of the liability workers' compensation insurance for 2021, '22 is before the board for approval. It is pretty much the same that has been for a number of years. The city-county insurance services is a recommended provider for liability insurance. It is really the only carrier in Oregon that is doing this right now, so that renewal is before the board for approval. The one with SAFE Corporation has slightly difference this year. SAFE has allowed itself to partner with CCIS, and by doing so, then we can obtain a discounted premium as a multi-carrier, multi-policy through CCIS. So the premiums are the same whether we go directly or indirectly for SAFE through CCIS, but because we go through CCIS for other items, we can obtain a slight discount. So both of those are before the board for approval, as well as the premiums for both of those policies. And there's also available for the SAFE Corporation premium as well that needs to be signed.
So Mr. Chair, I would move that we continue with current liability coverage through CCIS and current SAFE workers' comp coverage through CCIS and authorized payment of premiums.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Next item, youth services payable. Youth Services is requesting payment to price computers for the purchase of laptops and tablets due to the amount payment is before board for approval, $7,340.75.
I believe the doctor is-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dignity's on.
Good Lord, Dignity, let me steal your thunder. Sorry.
Am I allowed to speak at this point?
Yes.
Very well. Yeah, I was gonna, this is the Yumitila County Services Community Justice, and at this point, we're asking that we are allowed to purchase some laptops and some iPads and tablets for the purposes of our PO's utilization, as well as we'll be utilizing those for our kids to be able to attend education and also be part of virtual house tours. The money is going to be, does the board want me to give explanation as far as where the money is coming out of?
She's still there?
Did she freeze, or she?
She asked you a question.
Oh, I'm, I didn't hear the question.
Trying to know if you wanted a detail or-
Because we're only going to tell as far as where the money is coming up, out of, and how the county is going to be reimbursed.
Yeah, go ahead, if you have that in front of you.
Yeah, it's part of the attached payable. The money's probably, it's going to be coming out of our GCP grant. This money comes out of the Oregon Use Authority, and all $7,340.75 will be reimbursed back to the county by the end of, probably by the end of the year, or by the end of this fiscal year. And the purpose of the reimbursement is we will be utilizing that to better serve our kids and families, as well as keep our kids going to stay in our contention facilities for longer than they need to.
I appreciate you pointing out the fact that this is grant-funded. One thing I just want to make for clarification, when you referred to the laptops and iPads for the PO's, I think you immediately went into, "and our kids." You don't mean your children, you mean the kids in the program, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, I usually refer to the kids being served as my kids, so I apologize for that.
No, I totally understand, yeah.
But the kids that are currently on probation with our part.
Thank you, and I understand why you refer to them that way, and I totally get that, but just for clarification, I thought, just want to make sure, so, okay, thank you. So Mr. Chair, I'd move approval to price computers in the amount of $7,340.75.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Dan and I is out of town, so.
And Mark and I are slightly tied up pouring concrete at the moment. These are, the next two items are request for approval of payments for the maintenance division. The first one is to HMS Commercial Service. This was to repair the outdoor lights, as well as the first floor hallway lights, and because of that is due, not that's payable, is before the board for approval, and for
Mr. Chair of Approval.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And the next item is another maintenance payable. This is for some repairs that were required when two units failed. One is at the survey office, and the other one is here at the courthouse. And again, because of the amount is before the board for approval, it's to Murphy Seating and Air for $16,415.
Eighteen or fifteen?
Well, from here, I see fifteen.
Sixteen, did I say it on there?
Here.
No, on the front page.
Sixteen, four fifteen.
Four fifteen, okay, I thought I heard him say eighteen, so.
Here, wait, let's see where the invoice is. Yeah, there are three of them, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you sign that?
I did sign it, but my pin got stuck on something, so it doesn't quite look like my signature, but I assure you, Robert, it is my signature.
All right, I think Joe's on for the next item. Are you, Joe? He was.
If I find him, there he is.
There he is, I see him.
Oh, he's on. No, he's not.
Joe, you good? I don't hear him. I don't hear you, but you're not muted, unless Melinda pushes that button, then you will be.
I'm just hovering in it.
Is your microphone muted on your laptop, maybe? No?
Is this the one where you use Star Six?
If she clicks that, she's going to mute him, so don't push that. Yeah, don't mute him. No, that wouldn't be Star Six. Huh, we cannot hear him.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
I can hear you, but not Joe.
So, did you want to just do it then?
I'll read this, Joe, and you jump up and down if it doesn't sound right.
He might be calling in, too.
Oh.
Yeah, he's calling in, so give him just a second.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so I don't know if it's calling off my computer, but we'll go around it for right now. So this is Joe Camar, Director for Eagle House. This is a request to do a payment for just over $60,000 to Eagle Media Group. This is for a year's worth of radio ads, all aimed around COVID and promoting vaccinations, as well as once-a-month interviews that will be hosted on one of these radio stations which group is broadcasting across four different stations. This program, these programs are all Spanish-speaking with programs focused at different demographics of the Hispanic population across a wide area, including much more than Yumitila County, but obviously here, there's a bit more Yumitila than that.
Questions?
So that's coming from COVID funds, correct? That's not out of general fund dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, this is all being paid for, there's still a financial fee from state and federal authorities.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, with that, I would move approval to payment to Eagle Media Group in the amount of $60,268.
I'd point out, Joe, aren't some of these post-COVID messages of health information and so forth to the Hispanic community?
I'm sorry?
Aren't, won't these eventually evolve into general, a variety of health-related messages to the Hispanic community once COVID is, will pass that?
That is the plan, yeah.
Okay.
In order to complete the discount deal they are giving us, we have to pay this upfront. And right now, everything is all around COVID, so it's vaccinated, but we'll be looking at the UCU plan for other health information as we get out of this pandemic.
Good, I think that's an important part of our plan in that regard, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Did you second the motion?
Yeah, I think so. I seconded it.
Now you did.
Now you did.
I did, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, property bid?
There were four foreclosed properties that are still unsold from the auction and the bid process. We have now received a bid on one of those unsold ones before the board for consideration. So if you want to open the envelope and check and see what the bid is for and see if it's sufficient, this piece of property is in the City of Weston, it's a former business on Main Street.
Don't rip it. Said, "don't rip it."
Well, you had a letter opener, I didn't.
No, the letter opener was my Achilles' heel, apparently. Must have been the extra five minutes you took.
And this property was available for sale for $35,000 at the auction, so a bid would have to be over about $67,000.
This bid's the amount of $7,011.
That is adequate, if you want to accept it.
Mr. Chair, I would move acceptance of bid.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I believe the bidder's name was Mitch-
Mitchell L. Monthalen III.
Thank you.
Because I recall he's been here before. All right, we will go into hearing mode.
Oh, can I sign that?
Oh. We will go into hearing mode for the purpose of supplemental budgets.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Yumitila County. This morning, there is one supplemental budget for you to consider. Budget Order 2021-77, County Fair. The fair program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of this budget. This requires an increase in transfers in of $75,000 and an increase in contingency of $75,000.
Questions?
None from me.
None from me, we'll go out of hearing mode.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of budget order 2021-77.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have budget transfers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO. There are threes appropriations transfers to consider this morning. Budget Order 2021-78, STIF program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of this budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $100,000 and a decrease in contingency of $100,000. Budget Order 2021-79, stimulus reserve program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $800,000 and increases in transfers in of $75,000 and a decrease in contingency of $875,000. And Budget Order 2021-80, general fund computer information service requires a transfer of appropriation to adopt, to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of $10,000 and a decrease in contingency of $10,000.
Questions?
No.
I'll accept motions.
Mr. Chair, move approval of budget order 2021-78.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Move approval of budget order 2021-79.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Move approval of budget order 2021-80.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the last item, item 11, we'll go back into hearing mode. This is a fee ordinance amendment. Counsel, are you presenting?
Yes, I am. This is the annual update to the Yumitila County Comprehensive Fee Ordinance. Departments were requested if they had any updates to fees to submit them, and we received that there were three proposed changes from, first one is for assessment and taxation. Primarily, they have historically had manufactured structure fees associated with that, and the new director felt those were really part of their function, did not need additional fees attached to them, so that those are being requested to be all deleted, with the exception that when certification of taxes is requested, the first certification is free, but if they have to keep replacing that, then there will be a $20 charge. Human Services is updating theirs primarily to match costs for anger analysis or body fluid screenings. Recently, those fees have been increased to the county, so that cost is being passed on, and also a clarification on the anger management assessment is only 140 rather than 240. And also adding the VIP, this is not a new service, but it was not incorporated in the former fee structure, but it's now being requested to be added.
Mr. Chair, well, sorry, go ahead.
Then in the Sheriff's Department, due to legislative changes, the Civil Division fees are requested to be changed. One is for service for documents and associated service fees, and then also concealed handgun lessons fees were also changed by the legislature, and both of those legislative changes are being incorporated into the county fee structure. And those are the three areas that have been requested to be updated.
Glad I updated my concealed handgun lessons already. Can I go ahead and move approval now, or are you still going?
Then what we do, you need to have a hearing on it, and then to schedule the second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I forgot we were in hearing mode.
All right, so I need to adjourn the hearing and then schedule a second hearing?
Yep.
Okay, well, we'll adjourn the hearing and-
You might want to ask for public comment.
Oh, public comment. Vast audience. All right, now we'll go out of hearing mode and schedule a second hearing. Can we do that for the first meeting in July?
Yes, the proposed date would be July 7th.
Okay. I'll make a motion to that in regard.
Is, so it'll be second day of July, is that what that's going to be?
No, it would be the 7th, I believe, is the first Wednesday.
The 7th is the first Wednesday.
So the second meeting proposed would be July 7th.
I guess my question is, go back one to where you just were. Okay, so it says it'll go into a full force on July 1, but we're not going to have our second?
That is correct. That would be regular.
Okay.
The first of the fiscal year.
I'm good, that's all I have.
Do you want a second date?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we need, when we, at that first July meeting, we need to schedule our meetings for the last half of the year.
We did look at through September, and there weren't any changes through that point.
Did you see my calendar?
Not after Sept, we only, we only-
We only have through September, so if there's another, the next quarter, I don't know if you need some additional changes, but they were okay through-
Through September.
Through September.
Is there a September conflict you had, I think?
And that includes the September absence by me?
Well, there's still, there's still a quarter, there was still a quarter.
Okay, but you, you're aware of it.
So we'll have a meeting without you?
Yes, you will.
Cool.
If you're going to have it on that date.
I'm going to work on an agenda.
If you're going to have it on that date, you are.
I'll work on my agenda list for that, for that meeting.
Okay. Anything else?